Yeah, I can just flip them around if we need them. Oh, I don't even know if I'll end up using them, so. That's perfect.
Had it so, to be honest with you now, it's like. You gotta fire them when they're going.
Hey Louis, so you gonna be patting your own the tip?
Yeah, so they can mine, so when they hear a beep, they have one.
Okay, it's five o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and start, but we have to be out here before six, because the other board period at six. Uh, Jim Backfield, I'm the executive director of the tourist development council. Uh, we just got one of those folks I want to recognize, Brad Hopper. Okay, and he's, he's actually the guy who will manage this stuff, the last, the TDC built it, I guess. And then Louis Savella, uh, who is probably called folks that are making a, uh, presentation. And he's the guy that's gonna be running the timer, the computer and presentation. We're gonna have four presentations tonight. Uh, they're gonna be limited to ten minutes each. At nine minutes, there'll be a little ding go off on Louis's, uh, thing. And then they'll have one minute to, to write the, uh, and afterwards, we will do some pros and cons of each of the four, uh, presentations, uh, that, that we'll do tonight. And then we'll take this report and, uh, send it to the county commissioners. Uh, Mr. Jeff Larry Jones, the county administrator, could not be here tonight, he is at the freeport city council meeting, because they are discussing the fire district, uh, issue that whether they want to keep or think for their own personal fire district, or whether they want to become part of the county's fire district. And that was probably where he needs to be as opposed to here. So if there's not any questions, I want to get started. The first presentation we're gonna do, uh, and actually from the group that started this all, thank Mr. Davis's, uh, initial offer, so now we're outside of this whole discussion, although we've been talking for a long time that we do need additional sports facilities in the south area, so we're gonna go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm, I'm making this presentation on behalf of MC Davis, so if there's any hard questions, he's sitting right there. Um, the proposed park location, it's about two point two miles east of Emerald Coast Middle School on the north side of highway ninety-eight. Oh, got it. Um, the site is close to perfect, it's flat, it's, um, already cleared of vegetation, um, it's over ninety percent uplands. Um, the parcel that I want you to focus on is in the, in the back portion of this picture. Um, it's thirty-four point six three acres. Um, MC's been talking for about a year now with, um, Saint Joe about possibly putting some hiking and biking trails on, um, that section behind the parcel. Um, that's the intercoastal waterway that runs, um, runs right there. And Saint Joe owns those lands all the way to Panama City and maybe further than that. Um, and MC has been talking with them for about a year, and, um, they've agreed that if this project comes to be, they'll, they'll grant a license to allow hiking and biking back there. Um, and these pictures were actually ta- taken today, it's a beautiful piece of property. And we've spoke with somebody, um, from the Florida Trail Association about potentially, um, building a trail back there, and they were delighted at the idea of another trail in the area, and they said they would get a group of volunteers to put it together for us. Um, so here's the proposed property split up. That bottom, um, left corner that is, um, under consideration by the school board to potentially build a new school there. Um, the far left side, that little six and a quarter acre, um, parcel is actually owned by Regional Utilities, and there is a unique opportunity for s- some cost savings here. Um, Regional Utilities has that land bonded, so they can't convey it, but they can lease it. Um, they have agreed to, um, put, put that eighteen-year lease towards, um, the school board on behalf of the county. In exchange, that land would be, um, appraised, and whatever the appraised value would be, would be a credit towards the north parcel, towards the sports park, so that would make it less expensive. Um, and another option to make this park more affordable, the county would be able to divide that back parcel, um, which would service the needs of locals and existing tourists, and it would make it less expensive on a per acre basis. This would still be able to fit two ball fields, two multipurpose fields, some sand volleyball courts, playground, and skate park, and whatever the public would like to put there. So there's a, there's a summary, any questions? MC, anything to add?
Yeah, if there's none, you are, in fact, I will add something, then we'll take the questions. Uh, go back to one of the maps, yeah. The seven acres roughly that reach on utilities on there, they only have access by Eastman. And so it's not all that valuable though, it's because that Eastman Road that runs, uh, not being high-tech and young, I just have to go over, sure, the Eastman Road runs like so, and it's used by the poor visionary Saint Joe and, and Regional, so be hard to do too much with that where you have a big crop. Part of this deal is we're putting in, if this comes to me with the school board, we'll be putting a boulevard in right on the property line, and it's part of our proposal with him there, with them, they'll run right there. And so it would be, uh, a pretty deep deal to be able to trade out a circle of seven acres towards that. And the reason we divided it up is we heard the tourist development council loud and clear, and may as soon as we find, I don't care, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we got enough people down here. But there is no doubt that the locals need something. You cannot show me any place in the country of this size that doesn't have sports facilities, even in the poor places. Uh, Pensacola's got forty fields, Pace has got, uh, stuff, Milton, the bar, the whole bit, everywhere you go. So in answer to, I'm trying to develop something where TDC legally and practically can participate, because there is no way, whatever you do for locals, the tourist is gonna use it. I mean, my god, the biking is the second by pole, uh, per TDC's records, that that's the second most popular thing, that's the beach. You could have the most unprecedented biking trail, I mean, you got the potential to go twenty miles here, I mean, I don't know who wants to do it, but you certainly got the potential in the height. So we're saying that you could divide that. Okay, now, the first presentation that we made about, uh, using this as a tourist destination, now you would just be, uh, enhancing the experience of the tourists that are already coming and still providing for the locals. So we're trying to find a way that the county, because everybody, you know, everybody wants it, they know what it pays anything, and I sort of understand that, but we're getting credit for something that's, uh, of no value. And, uh, we can turn it into that with the boulevard, with when the school will put a boulevard in, and you literally can get it in first last place for twenty cents on the dollar. And the only restriction I would put on this is that only light the two most, the most, uh, western fields where I could have a buffer of unlighted fields between the remaining property where I can use it one day. In addition to that, if the county, you know, there's a lot of people that want a lot of things, and to me, it doesn't matter. There's people that talk about amphitheaters and expansion and all kind of things. Well, with this, uh, I will let you guys have another year to break up your mind on the eastern part, because I don't have any immediate plans for it. And, uh, for those of you who are not aware of this, I bought this from the county, and there's been all kind of, uh, some time ago. Uh, well, I bought it from Regional Utilities under their law of services, there's a common way who is owned by the county, so. Uh, and it's certainly not worth what I paid for it, I wish it was, but it's not, but it's just worth whatever it's worth. Uh, we have the appraisals in, I'm not pretty to them, because they were procured by the school board on this. And but whatever the appraisals are, that's, I'm a realist, so that's what I pay them. So with that, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Could you clarify, um, compared to your first proposal, uh, with the number of acres for the various parcels, can you clarify as to what this current, um, diagram shows acres wise for each parcel or total?
Yeah, roughly, uh, the entire north parcel there, uh, I'm sorry, it's not fair, again, I'm better, didn't, but. The entire north parcel rented off was thirty-nine acres. So this parcel here would be getting probably a slight majority of the uplands.
It's about twenty acres.
There's no wetlands on that side.
The full north piece is about thirty-five acres, the one on, the one on the left, that if we were gonna divide it up, it's twenty acres.
So it's the left-hand side of the triangle?
Correct, and it's actually getting the majority of the uplands because, because all of the wetlands are actually on the right-hand side. So that's twenty acres, a hundred percent uplands.
And then the bottom, is the bottom divided into two now or three?
That's correct, the bottom left parcel, um, that forty acres is under consideration by the school board, they're, it's potentially gonna have a school built on it.
And that's how many acres?
Forty. And that's including that re- regional utilities tract.
I apologize for being so slow, where is ninety-eight? Down on the bottom?
Yeah, uh, this, yeah, uh, it's orientated to the north, and, uh, here's ninety-eight, my, and it forms the, um, southern boundary there.
Okay, and the triandere piece we're looking at is, is?
The open area is the big piece, so the, uh, north part will be north of that, and then the other part will be about right there. We'll just divide it one more time. We'll get some better amounts, this was sort of short notice, and, uh, I don't know, we wouldn't really just decided to come here today, actually, so anyway, so that's about it, there's no question for that.
Thanks, and the, we appreciate your service, and we're very grateful, thank you. The next, uh, presentation will be about Mr. Owen, and as Louis, Louis is up.
I'm Phil Owen, this is Jeff Davis. Um, we have assembled a thirty-acre parcel. Uh, it's in the town center of Santa Rosa Beach, which is the next street over from this building, uh, which is JD Miller. We've got, uh, two tens on JD Miller and one ten that comes out on, um, South Eden or Old Blue Mountain, whichever they're gonna eventually name it. Um, we felt that it, it really seemed to fit a lot of things that, that people are talking about in the sports and the children. They, they have bike paths in there, they've got the girls and boys club going up. Um, our upland situation is we're somewhere between seventy and eighty-seven percent uplands on those parcels. Uh, we've had some conversation with the county about Old Blue Mountain, they've had it on the radar to put through. It's the only path left to go directly to the beach, uh, which would be ideal, we felt, for the flow of traffic. We'll have access off of Chat Holly, off of South Eden, and off of, uh, JD Miller and course ninety-eight. Uh, the zoning, I don't know what kind of zoning they need, but the town center zoning is real wide open. I didn't have as much to say as MC did, but. Uh, does anybody have any questions about it? These are three parcels, uh, separately owned, and all three of us have gotten together and agreed to sell.
Are there asking prices on those three parcels?
Uh, yes, the total would be two point seven million for the three parcels. We have wetland studies on two of them, and the third one does not have one yet, or, they didn't have one done.
No, what's adjacent to the property, is it residential or anything, or?
Was it's own now?
Yeah, are there houses next door?
Uh, uh, Mr. Horsevich owns a twenty-acre block to the north, and he's got one house of his, and his son's got another house, and.
So the person offering it is, is where, I mean, the person that's offering it is the one that'll be the neighbor?
No, no. Uh, oh.
I'm just wondering how a neighborhood will respond to it, if, if somebody lives right next door or not?
Mr. Horsevich, that's the only neighbor, and he's got twenty acres, so he wouldn't think he'd, I don't know.
Conservation residential on the west side, and part of the town center zoning, which was adopted, uh, two thousand and six.
Yes, sir.
Is, they're each ten acres, basically? What is, what is the width of each one of those tracks?
Well, they're, they're all three thirty by roughly thirteen twenty.
Okay.
So you got six sixty on JD Miller and three thirty on what we will think would be the new road.
Do you have a formal, uh, I'm waiting, I mean.
Go ahead.
Uh, do you have a formal wetland delineation, uh, on the land out in that area? And I, I don't know if any, it's eighty-seven percent upland, but it was in.
We had a, we had a study done, MC, right after we bought it. And, uh, we got eighty-seven percent, and there was even a question about another half to three-quarters of an acre. There's a little small creek that, right at that dotted line between A and B, that goes through there. And the rest of it's, uh, between eleven and thirteen foot all the way.
Who owns to the south of those parts?
Uh, the south of it, the state owns, state owns.
There's one.
There's one right below A that is owned by someone else that.
Privately owned.
Privately owned. Um.
Big chunk of state owns a bunch of those parcels in there, we just don't have, have a map showing the state on the property.
And the west side, South Eden, that is where the town center zoning stops. Everything, uh, west of that is state forest and out of the zoning, back to, whatever. There's water and sewer available, um, what else?
Yeah, all utilities.
All utilities are there.
Any other slides?
Is that the only slide?
Is gas up there?
I'm sorry?
Is natural gas up there?
I don't know, never.
Natural gas is available, I mean, that's, that's not available at this time, I don't believe, so.
Are there any others?
Oh, that is, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Is it cleaner?
Uh, no, it's just natural, natural.
Wooded?
Wooded land, yeah. I think they timbered it years and years ago, but there's some real nice big trees on it, maybe that's good.
Will purchased the timber, will you sell it to the county?
Uh, if they own the property, I'm sure they could, uh-huh.
Okay, there are no other questions, thank y'all very much, we appreciate you coming down. And then there's gonna be, uh, Mr. Mike Flint from, uh, South Walton Utilities.
Good afternoon, my name's Mike Flint, I'm the chairman of the board of directors for South Walton Utilities. And so months ago, when the issue of, uh, planning deals or kids in the, in the south end of the county came up, our board of directors looked at our percolation ponds, that's what you see right there. There we go. Down the other, okay. There we go. The percolation ponds are between US ninety-eight and Scenic Gulf Drive, uh, you'll see the, the white dots there in the center. Uh, and it's a site of twenty-six acres. The, uh, craftsmen at, uh, South Walton Utilities put together this conceptual plan for a layout with, uh, three soccer fields, two softball fields, and two baseball fields, plus the parking interspersed around those fields. And here's our concept, we got twenty-six acres available for the fields and for parking. They are percolation ponds, and that function has to continue. We need that for our utility, but it can be built on top of. The percolation field will have to be buried for the, uh, sports fields to be put on top of them, but that's, that's a doable thing. One of our conditions on the board is that this, that if this land is used by the county for these fields, there should be no cost to the members of our utility, we're a member-owned utility, and we're on a thin budget. So no cost to the members. You have to be held harmless for any activities there. But in return for that, you get a long-term renewable lease, twenty or forty years renewable, uh, with a small nominal fee to cover insurances that accrue to the, to the utility. One thing overthinking the others will probably have to increase our, uh, liability coverage on the insurance. I'll tell you the positive is no land purchase is required, it's a long-term renewable lease. There is a one-time cost to bury the percolation pipes, the, uh, the equipment underground deep enough so that, uh, they won't be affected by what's going on on the surface. And we estimate that's gonna be in the order of about five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that, engineering and construction. We're going to ask the nominal fee for, uh, incidental expenses, the development of the site, the fields, the concession stands, fencing, lighting, that will be the responsibility of the county or whoever puts this together. Just like, um, Frank Brown Park in Panama City Beach, this would be an opportunity for community organizations to chip in, to help the county develop the site. It would be produced by the county, but for the community, and, uh, as in Frank Brown Park, they, they had a lot of, uh, a lot of, particularly from the Kiwanis. Now, it is a safe environment for kids. Despen Water users has used their percolation field for the Frank Morgan, uh, sports complex there. It's, it's beautiful, it works, it's safe. We've, uh, looked at these things, uh, the size and shape of the site is, as you saw in the drawing, is conducive, it's, it's usable. Uh, it's virtually flat, their ponds now would have to be leveled out. There is access from arterial roads, but that's, we will talk about that, uh, more in just a second. The zoning is public uses, and included under public uses are recreational facilities. Uh, there is, uh, no impact on conservation lands in this site. There are no wetlands on our site. There are wetlands on the golf course to the, uh, to the, uh, west of us, northwest of us, but, uh, none on this site. The adjacent uses are a golf course and residential. Our, uh, there should be adequate parking, but I guess the whole issue of what is adequate is up in the air right now. But, uh, it looks like they're re-adequate parking nonetheless. Um, it is located in their lodgings, uh, restaurants, service, retail. It's in a, you know, fairly crowded area, so all these things are available. Uh, the potential for more development is probably very low, because residential and golf course, you know, this is what we have, twenty-six acres. And we, uh, looked at the potential to enhance the neighborhood, it would provide sports facilities for the fairly densely populated west end of, uh, South Walton. And there are, uh, trails, and bikers use the area quite a bit already. Nothing on the site, though. Now, what if the county were to, uh, lease the land from us and develop the park? And use it for visiting teams, we have three and a half miles of the site, there are seventy-five restaurants, more than five hundred businesses, including retail guests, stations, shopping, uh, grocery stores, drugstores, almost two hundred, uh, condominiums with about six thousand rooms are nearby, within that three and a half miles, and fifteen hundred hotel rooms. Could be a shoulder season possibility. We see this as something for the people of South Walton, not as a, uh, a tourist attraction. However, in the shoulder seasons, if the facility's available, it might be usable for, uh, for visiting teams. Now, the, uh, the issues, access from the arterial roads, uh, right now, the roads getting to this site are, are small, narrow. And, uh, that, that there could be an issue on getting a wider, uh, right-of-way or, or whatever, uh, method is to, uh, to, uh, get access. If, uh, if we could talk, uh, uh, Jay Meadows into it, we might take a slice out of the golf course to come directly off of ninety-eight, but I'm not gonna hold my breath on that. Uh, because there are residential uses, uses next to it, noise and light could be a, could be an issue. Let's go back. And, uh, the, uh, an issue for us is protection of the percolation system. We would have to work with the county engineer when making the plans to make sure that, uh, particularly, uh, structures like the, uh, uh, concession stand, the, uh, pilings or lane do not impinge on the, uh, on the system, but that's, that's, you know, that's doable if the engineers talk together. That's the concept. Uh, it's land that's available, less expensive. You know, it's, uh, a small amount yearly for, uh, for a lease fee, and, uh, less than a million dollars to develop the, uh, the fields, to, to, to prepare the site for development of the fields and other amenities.
Can you get a try and play out your idea?
We can't. We've been trying for Geronimo for years and haven't gotten it. But I'm sure that for something like this, we could probably demonstrate the need. Okay?
Okay. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Flint?
Um, the Morgan, the department in Destin, have there been any issues with, uh, the my percolation?
Nope, nope. I, I talked to the issues first. Well, the general manager of Destin Water Users said, no problem. It's, it's been, uh, no burden on them at all.
How much is the lease?
I'm sorry?
How much per the lease, you mean?
Well, we, we figure something like ten thousand. Uh, Destin Water Users charges seven for the, the Morgan complex. So something, you know, ten thousand or less. We, we're not up to make money.
Also, another question, sorry, and it's the last one. But this concept doesn't include the skateboard park? Is that something that would...
No, this is strictly the soccer fields and the ball fields.
You could have them there because it would have to go deeper than what you'd wanna bury. Like, if you're running a twelve-foot bowl, you'd have to build it up twelve foot, you'd go down twelve.
Gotcha. So that would be possible with the percolation?
Right. So the other two, the Morgan and the National Utility, it's not possible.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? My belt is wrong. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. Our last briefers, Mr. Bruni, there he is.
Well, everyone, this is my first time at presenting in front of the county, so I'm not as high-tech, and I really didn't know exactly what the format is, so I'll have to... And I will have to present showing this, but if I can get that to some of the, you know, decision-makers. What... My name's Alan Bruni. I'm a local realtor. And I have, um, just become familiar with a piece of property that's right on Thompson Road. And it, um, abuts Helen McCall Park. So, um, I know it's gonna be hard to see, and if I could come up there, I could kinda show you a little bit. But if you go down Thompson Road, um, you can see that Helen McCall Park would be right here. I think there was a newly acquired piece of parcel that, uh, was just acquired by the county. And this twenty acres right here on, uh, Thompson Road abuts. And so what I'm here to do, I just wanted to, uh, show up to the county, see if I could represent, uh, them as, uh, to purchase it if they thought it would be something interesting. What we thought that, that was good about this piece of property is that it gives you some southwest access to Helen McCall Park from Thompson Road, so that you don't just only have the access for ninety-eight. It's twenty acres. Uh, it would have provided plenty of room for some extra fields. There is a water feature on this property. It has a, um, on these, uh, you can see it on the, uh, aerial, but it has, uh, like, three and a half, four, uh, pond out there that is a bit retention and could be used for some aquatic, uh, activities, uh, as well. It, uh, right now, uh, the parcel has a couple of buildings on it. They're just some sheds. Uh, it is also surrounded by the state parkland, which, um, you know, is, that's some value there, too. And, um, we just thought it could be an attractive addition to, uh, the Helen McCall Park if you were, you know, still looking at trying to expand that. And the, the real good access for, uh, coming off of Thompson Road on that southwest corner. So really, we just wanted to put it in your hands, let you know we would love to, uh, represent you guys if you thought that would be of interest. Uh, we think we can help you negotiate that price. The price is, uh, one point seven five million for the twenty acres. Um, and it already has some easement roads that are on the property. Uh, it's dry land except for that, uh, that little retention pond area, so... But we just wanted to, to put that out there and let you guys have a chance to, uh, consider it, and, um, hopefully, hopefully you'll be interested in it. Any questions?
Any questions, please, Bruni? Does the, uh, acres that we're talking about, does that include pond or...
It does. It does include.
So it's sixteen, so it will...
Right, yes.
Should say that pond is a, just a, uh, retention pond?
It looked like it would be like a retention.
You know what it's treating? I mean, what, is it from the road or the...
Well, I, it looked like to me that it's kind of really retaining from that park.
Small water treatment.
Yeah, I think so. That's what it kinda looked like to me.
Is there a residential, residential?
There is no residential.
Coming out of Thompson Road.
To the north.
Is it? Okay, well, then there, yeah, there it is.
What's it presently zone?
Um, you know, I don't know what it's on right now, but, um, what, what is that area's zone? I'm not really sure, Frank, but, um...
Conservation residential is what it's on.
Is it? Okay. So that, that was just, uh, our presentation. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the, uh... Four, four great, uh, presentations. The, um, we're gonna try to capture in about ten minutes or so some pros and cons for each of the four proposals. I think we, and really, we have a one A or one B because, uh, Mr. Davis had the, the full triangle proposal and then the half triangle proposal. And so I, the one person I think we didn't get the cost of the proposal for was from Hillside. I, I give you...
Well, I would say, I, I can't say that with any definitive, because as you well know, it, it can only be purchased for whatever it's worth. I would estimate the western triangle of twenty up, eight, upland acres at the Wither Boulevard going to, as we presented, netting out reasonably twenty million and a million for, you know, I guess.
And then the, uh, full triangle with, uh, that did, that did include, uh, what was that, both parcels in the north? What would that be about, you?
Uh, the thirty-four acres, I would say, uh, it probably would have raised, uh, with the Boulevard in place, it was probably between two and a quarter, two and a half.
So, because I'm, I'm just trying to get everything apples to apples, and then, so you often, uh, do pros and cons of each of the... Well, let's start with, uh, and then two would be, uh, well... Would be, uh, Mr. Owens' proposal, okay? And then number three would be the Walton, I'm sorry, the, uh... South Walton. South Walton Utilities proposal. And then the fourth proposal really would be an expansion of Helen McCall Park. That's what it sounds like. I mean, that's basically what you're bringing to this. Uh, and so, uh, pros and cons. If we can just get probably the top three or four pros, top three or four cons for each of the proposals, things that just immediately come to your, uh, your mind. Anybody?
One A, one B, no, no neighbors, no residential around there. Is there a, is a pro?
Right, okay. So pro is, uh, no or limited residential?
And is it not the largest land use as well? It has the most...
No space.
Yes.
Uh, if they did the thirty-eight acre parcel, I believe that, or thirty-four, I'm sorry, thirty-four acre parcel, it would be the twenty-eight, twenty acre parcel would not be. And the thirty-four acre, does that include the wetlands on the thirty-four acre?
Yeah, it would include the one, uh...
Down there in the southeast corner of the... Okay, so, I, I, I'm not sure I would say that's a pro or not until, because I don't know how many wetlands are on any of the properties. And then, you know, while I appreciate eighty-seven percent, um...
Right.
Until somebody showed me something that said, this is the buildable amount on this parcel, and this is the buildable amount on this parcel, and the, I, I'm not sure I would want to represent the board of county commissioners that this is...
No, I was just asking.
Okay, yes, it is. I think the thirty-four acre parcel is, uh, the largest parcel. I don't know if it's the largest buildable parcel. I, I'll just put it right there. Any...
I appreciate the centrality of that, of that, uh, location, being that a lot of us live on the east side of three thirty-one, and there's never seen people.
Okay, so it, uh, services, uh, to...
Eastern.
The eastern, eastern half of, uh, South Walton County, or of the south end.
About the option of the purchase versus lease?
Uh, I don't know, because I could argue both ways that the lease, or just from a financial standpoint, is actually a much better deal, but some people, you know, I'm, I'm personally a person that likes to own it, and then I can figure out what the heck I wanna do with it, but I, um... That would be in the, the record that, you know, this is a lease, and this is, these three are purchases, and, you know, whatever three of the five county commissioners would decide was important to them should be what would be important to the rest of us. So...
Uh, Mr. Davis?
You know, I think, uh, I did make one thing clear, obviously. I'm not an independent politician here, but, uh, I did wanna make clear St. Joe's position that this is free. This is their, uh, they've worked with it now about a year. We have some other things working for the public, but, uh, in addition to the hiking and biking, I think it's quite amenable to the body trails and environmental experiences on there. And I think this is their own theme possibly. And I just wanted to make clear that there was no cost to the thing, and that the two volunteer groups that we talked to said they would put the trail system in.
Any other pros for any of the four proposals? You don't have to limit, uh...
Accessibility is great from that parcel going in and out of ninety-eight, just like going in and out of school, the middle school and that, it's so easy in and out.
Well, right now, I'm not sure the accessibility...
If that road was put in, yes.
Absolutely. But I'm not sure that it does differentiate, uh, because if you put in the, the road to the...
Okay.
That one, or, you know, the one, the Helen McCall, that has actually access to Helen McCall if you go to just the... So I think they're all would be similarly accessible.
I don't know if Poplar is as much, because this video, it opens Poplar to be as good as theirs. Uh, y'all sort of love cheaper if y'all put them both in.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think, um, one of the properties offered has a significant drawback that we couldn't have the skate park built on that property, so definitely not after it on a utilities property. I think, apparently, if he's gonna do that.
It, is that...
Right, I see, I know, the problem is... Cover it though, I mean, you're... And then, they're in this section in there where the skate park could go, where you wouldn't have to put layers down? Have it solved?
Why, why couldn't you just?
Yeah, you could, you could build it up. Because I would say the water table, I, I would definitely leave the water table on the northern parcel in the town center here. You, you're not gonna build down twelve feet, twelve foot two then, without having significant water.
Yeah, so maybe that property is not usable if you're gonna do a skate park. It's not very, uh, skate parkable.
Well, and I'm not sure, the county commission hasn't decided it's gonna include a skate park, so that's...
It was likely, yes, that the recommendations were realized.
I was like, number five, it was, it was four, I think.
And then, and that wasn't actually a proposal?
No, no, no.
Well, like, to be fair about the vote, you know, you gave everybody three votes.
Right.
So she could have voted twice, and then voted her thing down by voting those things up. So I, I only voted once for the skate park, because I don't care of any other things like that.
But, yeah, I mean, they, they... I don't have a problem, but, but I'm not sure which ones could or could not.
Well, we've just been voted on. I was saying that one probably had a definite con with regards to trying to skate park, yeah. So it didn't...
Yeah, you could build it up.
Well, no.
Yeah, I was just... That's what you're saying. We can't put that as a con.
No, but you could build it up or down on any of the properties.
Raise the property.
Yeah, no, you don't raise the property, you just build it up.
Yeah. Maybe we're thinking about doing that.
Twelve, twelve, twelve foot, twelve foot.
But you don't, you don't wanna put twelve feet of concrete, is what he's saying. If you're gonna build a twelve-foot concrete park with a heavy firework, uh, you, you wouldn't wanna pile twelve feet of concrete just to build this fall, is what he's saying.
Okay. Any other pros and cons for any of the other?
Three and four do have residential problems. Like, if, um, the tantrum.
Yeah, I, I would say they all, based on all the presentations, are, may have some residential problems. If, if you remember, you've got residential on number four to the northwest. You've got residential on, uh, two to the north, that one guy, I mean, he lives on twenty acres. That is the size parcel. On three, you may have residential problems, just get the condos right there behind them. And then, on Mr. Davis, I believe, he said the eastern fields couldn't, he didn't want them lighted, uh, because that would basically diminish his ability to develop the property, I think, of these four. So you're right, they all have some lighting challenges, uh, and possible residential challenges. So that's a con. Uh, I think there'll be, probably it'd be easier on...
Except for one A, one B would...
That's true.
One A, because one A wouldn't have, because then he wouldn't have that parcel to develop.
This might be a real tough question, but, uh, no matter what it's, two K and, or, or a lease, of course, the lease is a chance. It's all gonna come out of taxpayers' money. Where's the county planning to get the money to do this? And then, not only buy the land, but also do the development of it. Who's gonna develop it? The county develops it.
There's two different issues. The, the purchase of the property, what they're talking about, is, uh, there's still three options on the table, although the T V C option is kind of going away to the wayside. Uh, one is a TIF, uh, and TIF is a tax increment funding. And what they do is basically, uh, typically in Florida, you see these in community redevelopment areas. This, Destin has two, where they come in and they do a base year, what they call a base year. And they say, this is the taxable value of this area, whatever that area is. And they could do the entire south end of the county, or it could be a subset of the south end of the county or whatever. And they say, this is the base, the tax base. When the next year, they come to assess the value of all the property in that area, if it goes up three percent, the base goes into the general fund. The tax increment funding, so the increase basically goes into whatever this fund could go. It wouldn't be a community redevelopment area, but those you gotta show the line, you gotta show the general base that would be into this authority or whatever. The other technique, which is, is a little bit similar, but not exactly, uh, they create a municipal services, either taxing unit or municipal services, uh, if you... And basically what that is, uh, we, we have separate, you know, we have empty account. It'd be like having the South Walton entire district, you know, where you pay the owner a separate tax. You would pay a recreational authority, South Walton Recreational Authority tax. you know, where you pay them a separate tax, you would pay a recreational authority, South Walton Recreational Authority tax, and it could be on the assessed value of all the property, and whatever that tax rate was. And so we have to generate everybody's taxes within the district, on the South End of the county. The taxes would go up, you know, whatever mileage rate, it would probably be cap, like fire districts are. So maybe it starts out as a half degree, so everybody that owned property in the South End would get the Minnesota. Municipal services...
Does that require a vote?
I believe that would require a vote, but yes. And actually, I believe both of those would require a vote.
Do my loans permanent taxes?
Yes, yes.
Uh, they, they can be, but they can be...
Depends on how they structure.
It depends on how they structure, because the CRA is thirty years. So that's, that's the TIF that I'm most familiar with. And after thirty years, because when you can't renew it, because what you're in a community redevelopment agency, you're supposedly fixing a lighted area, and once you, you fix it, then you're on your own to maintain it.
Is there any option that does not require a vote of approval?
Uh, they could just take it out of the general fund, and that would not require a vote. If they just said they could, in theory, although I don't think they're inclined to do so, they could say, you know, "Next year, we're going to raise the mileage from three, five, five, whatever it is."
Still raises your taxes.
Right, and if they could raise it to four mels, and they could use the money out of the general fund. They're not, my understanding is they're not inclined to do that, because then everybody in the county, the whole county, basically pays to fund the, the fields for just the South End. Now, if they raised it and they said, "We're going to build ten fields down here, or we're going to build ten fields in Union Act, or whatever, we want all, you know, Freeport, which is growing too." If we, you know, we're going to do something like that, then they, that, that has a policy decision.
So both other options require a vote of approval?
What, other options?
Both other options require a vote.
Yes, that's my, I do believe that, yes.
Jim, what was the process that you used to solicit proposals?
Uh, they basically advertised on the county website, they said, "I'll let..."
Yeah, it was advertised on the county website, it was posted to those who were signed up for our notifications to the website, it was sent to the media. I know there was a couple stories done on it, where they mentioned that you could come and propose. So we tried to get it out the best we could. I mean, like I said, the media helped us out a little bit, I wish we'd be able to more in the print field, but the television did a pretty good job kind of putting it out there. So we tried to put it out as far as we could, fresh releases and website.
But if, but if it's, if it's decided to go forward with this, this being just the activity of establishing a sports park, it's not closed, I mean, anybody, anybody can still come in and all...
Oh, yeah, 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 no, the, the, the problem, we're going to have at least two more meetings, workshops or whatever. The next meeting, we're working with, work with companies, people, groups that actually build these professional facilities, or semi, you know, where we could bring in folks. And there's one that's actually not too far away, and we're going to let them make a presentation. You know, "This is what we could build on twenty acres or thirty-four acres, and this is, you know, if we have eighty-nine skate parks, and six ball fields, and two lacrosse fields, and same volleyball, or whatever it would be, and this is how much, and this is how much we would pay y'all every year, and this is what we would have, and there's how many years to contract with just one of those." And then we're going to have one just on the front, to get to Suzanne's point, where we bring in folks from all over, and say, "Okay, you know, we think it's going to cost twenty-five million dollars, and play this for the cost to do all this." Here's, give you some hard numbers on that, which is one of the things, these folks that will come into the next workshop, they will tell us, because everybody's like, "Oh, you can build a ball field for ten thousand dollars, so and so will run his, you know, my brother-in-law's got a road grader, and, you know, he'll do it," or what, and no, we're going to get a professional organization to come in and tell us and say, "This is what it costs to build a baseball field, this is what it costs to build a softball field, this is what it costs to build a purpose field, or lacrosse field, or whatever."
Can we bring somebody to your attention, or can we offer to bring someone in to...
Sure.
Can you add something?
Yeah, I'm, this is a, it's a...
That just says a number to it, so we can also...
Well, this is the one guy that I've reached out to, and I have a list of his names, but he, he, this is what he does. He builds sports, he builds...
So we'd be glad to help you with those.
Just to give you the name, and I'll introduce him. Asking the, or her, the families, make a presentation to the... And so then the second meeting will, "This is what it's going to cost."
Yeah.
"How many do we want to build?" And then the last meeting will be, "How do we want to pay for it? You know, what's the recommendation for folks to pay for it?" And then we'll go to the board of county commissioners, and we'll make a presentation, and we'll say, you know, "We've had four workshops or whatever, and here's what we figured out." And then everybody will be allowed to come, and somebody can come in at that time and say, "Hey, I just inherited fifty acres, and I'm just going to be, you know," or whatever. So it's not closed until the board of county commissioners takes a vote, and directs either Mr. Jones or myself, or, you know, directs a ballot measure to do a TIF funding mechanism or whatever.
So bed tax money is completely out?
Well, we, and so, our, my position, and I'll get clarification on it, but my position is, I'll do what the board of county commissioners tell us to do. And if they say it's going to be a bed tax funded thing, I will say exactly what I said last time. Then my responsibility to the bed tax collectors and the church development council is to repay that note as quickly as I can, to include the interest, and the way to do that is to go, basically, hire somebody to fill that thing twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, with traveling softball teams, with traveling baseball teams, with traveling soccer teams, you know, markets.
Then the, then the service ones don't get to be...
Right, and that's, that's, that's my, because what I think everybody wants is the local season. Now, there is a, and it's not all or nothing, you know, if we can work out somebody on the shoulder season, somebody that, I can't remember the four proposals. Okay, and if there isn't a softball, baseball, soccer, or cross season around here, you know, there's three weeks of the year that are open, then we can probably partner whoever's running it, or whoever, and say, "Yeah, we will bring in a fan," or we will bring... You can have a festival on those multi-purpose days, just so you get everything else. So it's not all or nothing, but the position is that the, the construction funding comes from the TDC, and the TDC has to repay that note, then our moral and legal obligation is to repay that as quickly as we can. And there's a proven way to do it, and that's to go hire companies that do nothing but fill your...
Is there a, is there a possibility to split funding between the TDC and county funds?
And that's up to those five people. Yeah, yes, yeah, from my perspective, I just, and go do it with board of county commissioners. Okay, and I'm going to advise them to the best of my ability to stay within the statutes to do that, so.
Are you going to write this off?
Yes, Louis is going to...
Could he, could he add one thing that I...
Yeah.
Could he, could he put a county map, or at least a south county map up, and show where these different locations, these different parcels are on the map?
Louis, is that notable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, he can.
There's also, on the website itself, I think it's under public information, there's a link that says, "Wong Kai Sports Complex." I think the presentations that I have, I can post those to the web, and I'll, I'll try and develop a map as soon as I can. It may not be the best, because it won't be a GIS map, it'll probably be a public ground map.
At least you get a chance to compare.
Yeah, I'll try and put that as well.
And what case is that?
You get some, you want to screen capture Google after.
That's how, just highlights and covers where they are.
Okay, we have to, like Kay says, is there any other issues, any other questions for us? Thank y'all very much for coming, I appreciate it. We'll let you know, I'm not sure when the next workshop will be, but probably in the next month or so.
Oh, no, thank you. Yeah, 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 yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you haven't started doing the workshop?
No.
If you go to our website, and the services, and it takes a note finding, if you sign up to receive county commission calendar notifications, you'll get anything. You'll get anything that was just put on our page, and you'll get those...
Yes, yes.
And I think that's the biggest agenda for everybody.
Exactly.
None of these properties are going to bend. We need something, right.